Good afternoon. It is two o'clock on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two. And this is the call order of the City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission Meeting. We will start with a roll call. Commissioner Rickar, here. Commissioner Bachman, here. Commissioner Ward, here. Commissioner Doran.
Here.
Great. All right. Do we have an approval of the meeting agenda motion? So move second.
Could I ask something?
Oh, go ahead.
Could I ask a question before we do that? Um, did the mayor ask us to talk about building lot coverage?
Um, I don't know where that came from. I really don't. It's been a week now.
But we covered this very recently in the planning commission. We discussed it. We voted on it.
Actually, one of my committee members, that's where it came from.
So we're gonna go back and revisit something we've already visited in the recent past instead of doing current things.
Essentially, yes, because there was concern by a member of the commission that there was a problem with it and it wasn't. You all in favor of approving the meeting agenda?
All right.
Owen?
No.
All right. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So. The building lot coverage issue, we've talked about this at length. I'm sorry, public comment. Do we have any public comments on the room? Public comments online? Yes.
Hi Gary, it's Vita Piera. I wanted to thank you for bringing forward to the group my analysis on the forty percent rule. I'll look forward to your explanation. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. Before we get into relooking at the building lot coverage. After it was incorporated and put in city code. And it wasn't just a commission member, it was also Marshall that brought up that it was impacting commercial development. Because Marshall came up and said that forty percent lot building coverage had no provision for commercial properties. And he already had one request for a mini storage unit, which was basically gonna have to drop two or three or four units to meet the lot coverage. That was after it was brought up by Commissioner Ward and potential issue in also on commercial.
Could I take us through kind of the history of what the planning commission did?
That would be great.
Okay. The planning commission did addresses, and Elder, are you correcting me if I'm saying false? Because you had already gone to there. We did the forty percent rule. When we were doing design standards and it was only, and I emphasize, only men for residential. And we never talked about permission. So therefore, I think when you propose the change makes a lot of sense because we never tended to do that. When we were going through it, we had all different commissioners under the order line and we talked about. There was one commissioner that wanted to take the lot size, take away the, take away the setbacks and then apply forty percent. Which basically makes most lots not building them. And before, before we started trying to put something to make the forty percent rule mean something. This, the city was, was very loose under interpretation of forty percent rule. So basically, we were told that it was only the main house on the property, that's only meant to comply with it, which made no sense at all. So after a lot of negotiations back in forty between all the planning commissioners, we talked about so many different things. We got down to where we said the forty percent rule applied to all, all structures on, all buildings, all buildings. Not structures, because I was here for the structural debate, all buildings on the property, including sheds. Uh, extra garages and whatever. Yes, I did a lot of the math and you can put almost anything you want on the, on a plot. And even using Thor's seventy-two hundred, I went through and calculated another one based on that. And I, I came up with, uh, Thor using twenty-one air square foot house, four square foot garage. Like, I checked, four square foot, greenhouse and a shed, it's forty-eight hundred out of twenty-eight eighty. So either seventy-two hundred square foot lot can have a lot of buildings on it and be within that forty percent rule of setbacks. The other thing is I went today, I looked at the role of listings and I was trying to find multiple listing. A large house on a center two square foot lot, I could not find. The only one I found was close was a, uh, two thousand square foot house, but the people build it. Who store it. And therefore, and then they had three grounds. So, um, I just don't see that, um. A change is, is needed in the forty percent. That's, I didn't even did my house and I've got a lot, a lot of coverage, but also I have a ten thousand square. I mean, ten thousand acre square foot lot, I've got a total of, I don't know. About thirty-five, forty, thirty-four square feet covered in buildings and garages.
I couldn't agree with you more than, and I, I did the same calculations on various houses, various lot sizes. Average house size, even putting a larger on. In almost every case, it came out with, by the time you put a house and a garage, you still have over eleven hundred square feet or thereabouts on a residential lot. So I think the forty percent rule is, works fine on residential. I don't have any problem discussing separately, commercial or multifamily lots. And how we may or may not want to exclude some of them, I'm very open to that. But if we change the forty percent rule on residential lots, this will be the result. It does not include garages or sheds, which means you can put up. A house, three sheds, multiple garages, and essentially build a lot right back to the setbacks. Which I don't think is a good look for this community. I think we changed the looks of the community entirely. And again, I'm, I'm more than willing to look into mini storage, multifamily. And see if we need to make some exceptions in those, but generally speaking, I think we're right on.
Right. I just want a little personal clarification there. Are we talking about revising the forty percent rule? Or are we just talking about removing commercial from that? So there's two things. We, we originally, last meeting had gotten to removing commercial, making it applicable to residential. And then in the interim, Thor, one more time brought up reverting it from building back to dwelling structure. So I wanted to throw an opportunity to have a discussion about the implications of not reverting to dwelling structures on residential lots. Go ahead, Thor. Well, that answered your question.
Sure, yeah. One question, Elder, what, what lot size were you using, a square footage were you using?
You told me on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I used, um, let's see, I wrote it down here. I used, now, it, it seems to me, and I could be wrong, just making an estimate from listings. That the average square foot has an ocean shores is probably around eighteen hundred square feet, but I used the twenty-one.
No, I mean, what size lots were you talking about?
Well, I used two different, but we need to determine houses also, if you're talking about lots. So I used a nine thousand square foot lot and a twenty-one hundred square foot house and a two car garage. And that comes out to twenty-four sixty, forty percent of thirty-six hundred, it still needs eleven hundred and forty square feet. For garages, sheds, greenhouses, whatever. Then I used an eight thousand square foot lot with an eighteen hundred square foot house and a two car garage. And you still have over a thousand square feet that you can build garages, two or three sheds, greenhouses. There's, there's plenty of room on a residential lot to remain within the forty percent rule and get everything anybody could need.
I think starting from a baseline of nine thousand square feet or even eight thousand square feet, there are almost. The only lots that are at least that size are waterfront canal lots. They're nine thousand square feet. Ninety percent of all the rest of the residential zone lots in town are either seventy-two hundred square feet or seventy-seven hundred square feet. They all have a uniform size of seven, seventy by hundred ten or sixty by hundred forty. So I think right there, we start our calculations with, with a bias toward what it, what doesn't actually exist. The other concern I had was multifamily, the, this rule in particular harms the multifamily dwellings. Because they're the same size as residential lots typically, seventy-one hundred or seventy-seven hundred. And when you, on a triplex, you want to put a triplex on a lot. That wouldn't fit, that would, that would exceed the forty percent right there. And that's a problem because we've zoned in these, these sizes, but now we're saying, oh, it may be zoned for that, but you can't build that on there. Well, that's almost like a taking, it's what I can understand though. Just when we do what I consider serious revision of the code like this, we didn't have a public hearing. And neither did the council. And the last time we passed a major zoning revision was, I think, two thousand and five. And we had two public hearings on that, the publication, everything else. Just, just for something that was rather, I think we, we eliminated camping on commercial. That was the most serious thing we did on that. So because we had to start with a realistic base size of what we're starting with. That was an imaginary lot size we, we might have here and there. The other problem with canal front lots is that the setback regime has been established. So that while your statutory setbacks might be twenty-five feet on the canal. The new setback rule established by, uh, shorelines a couple of years ago. Ignored that and decided setback lines have an average of what they were along that area. In other words, if a lot of the houses are fifty feet back from the water, that's gonna be your setback line. Well, that further compresses that area when we, when we start calculating these things. Our problem here in Ocean Shore is that we have a great number of regulations regarding the size of something you could place on a lot. We've got setbacks, we've got minimum square footage on houses, we have a new rule now on the forty percent, which used to be dwellings only, now it's everything. And in fact, we don't even have a way to calculate dwellings that the, this, the total size consumed by structures. Because we also said that these included non-permitted structures as well. Both are non-permitted, how do we know they're there? And how do we use that as a calculation involved in this? It's kind of, if we're gonna say that, we should either require those all structures to be permitted. Or, or figure out something else to do. I'm also concerned that. We have all these various building blocks of what you've got to do to build a house or a lot. That we have no experience with that by making this major modification. We've had about sixty years of the forty percent rule based upon dwellings only. And we know exactly how it affects, everything has been going on as respected construction. But we don't know what this new rule we passed a couple of months ago has on the affected building because we've never done it before. And we didn't differentiate between dwellings, buildings, and structures, which have, which to the average person sound pretty normal, all the same thing. But to the code itself, it differentiates them, differentiates them quite dramatically. Structures or anything laying on the ground that you put there, building is something with, sort of, by formality, puts stuff in in the dwellings that you live in. So without being particularly concerned about those different definitions, I think we made a mistake by changing it. If we simply change it back to what it originally was. Uh, we know what the effects of that is. We don't know what the effects of the new forty percent rules are right now. Because we've never done it before, except when people try to apply to the building department for a commercial structure and find that they can't do it anymore. If you look at area math, which I gave you a couple of weeks ago, about all the commercial structures in town right now, almost all of them exceed forty percent. If you are building anywhere else, you're gonna be using sixty-six percent. I don't think there's any argument on that first. No, I don't, I don't do that.
There's more argument on that.
And, but I think with, they're spilt over into other things we hadn't thought about, uh, because they are different types of structures.
Well, what the planning commission really had trouble with is kind of the free for all that was on lots. Because like you said, Anthony K. L. I. said that it was only the original building that was on there. So that meant after that was on, you could put anything you want.
Up to forty percent, yeah.
Well, you could do, yeah, just don't go, don't get into setbacks. Well, that doesn't look very good notion, sure, so and, and you gotta remember that we're trying to, and this is where we struggle with environmental, we did a fire bill. Commission, what we're doing this is to enhance the growth of vegetation. Oh, sure. And, and we all, and if you drop, she has one of the best views from the street you can ever have. Cut this little hole in there to get into her property, looks great. But my lot, and I, and I decided I wasn't building one, and even packed up my house. But he got the lot, it was already clear, it was stripped, I mean stripped. That mine, that's one, the two on the other side were all stripped, which that's what we don't want to do. And we don't want to see buildings on all of it.
So, before, so I was here for the end of it, remember this, I didn't do a lot of the French brother, like the last two or three. And there was a lot of discussion about structure, construction were out for the blue landmark. Right, you know, drivers and all that sort of stuff, and so we went to all of that. We thought that the definition at the time of buildings was sufficient to prevent, and there are some examples in town, I can tell you. Where you have lots that have a house, a very large second garage, then another third garage, and then the lot just becomes full of buildings. And it's not good. I don't think anybody's gonna say.
I don't disagree. I think one of the biggest problems we had is when we imposed minimum square footages on, on dwellings. That accelerated this problem. Because if, if our court, for a house in, uh, Los State Division, uh, twenty-one, had to be a thousand square feet. Then there's half of that forty percent rule already. Well, if, if we say that we don't want to strip lots of all the vegetation. That particular issue on minimum square footage houses, dwellings was a prime mover of that. It wasn't this other rule.
Yeah, but, um. The point is, is the planning commission put conscious separate into the definition of building versus dwelling. Very, very well.
I, I, I would like to propose that we separate out the discussion and discuss residential. And the rest is separate issues. Because if you go, transal in the turn right on Duck Lake Drive, about a block down on the right. Somebody put up on a lot, a monstrous garage. I mean monstrous, bigger than any house around.
Let's, let's leave to the adjacent house.
Pardon?
It's common ownership of a house next door in that lot.
Well, yeah, but my point is. We, we get to the point where outbuildings and extra garages stop dominating the landscape. Rather than the green reader that is really required versus, you know, if you look at the code. Um, and I, I think it's getting out of hand.
So that's still in the forty percent rule though, isn't it?
Pardon?
That's still in the exist, in the new forty percent rule, isn't it?
No, it was up before.
Well, even, even it.
Yeah.
I, I agree.
It's still, it's, it's one, applied to the new rule, no matter what.
But then I, I, if I could just think. I think we could have a better discussion if we separated the issues out.
I'm gonna do that, but, and then one thing I want to do, Thor, before we do is, we're gonna actually take three votes. On this shortly, okay, two votes probably. Back to the city one square foot lot in their environmental. Regardless of what you do, there's twenty-eight hundred left, square feet left for buildings. The non-buildable is the setbacks. So bringing setbacks into the buildable is sort of not relevant. Because you're working the setbacks anyways. So if the setback squeeze you below forty.
It's relevant only on waterfront.
What?
It's relevant only in the waterfront.
Right, but that's you're getting squeezed by the setbacks, not by the forty percent rule.
Oh, that's a point here.
But what I'm saying is, is on us, on your, and I agree with you that the majority of the main lots build ours, seventy-two hundred square feet. Twenty-eight, two thousand eight hundred available for buildings. So I just want to make that clear, setbacks don't play into that.
Right.
Because your setbacks by definition are non-building, so they're into the part that you must protect automatically. You don't need to look at setback in that on our interpretation of how to do that. So, there's three things. I also agree with you, Thor, and then we don't want to come to any more. That we may have to take a look at multifamily residential. Okay, so what, I'm gonna, go ahead, Thor. So what I want to do is, I'm gonna make a motion that we discuss. Commercial only in this meeting, then defer residential until a marshal is here to help us talk a little bit more about multifamily.
I think that's fine, yeah. That's the biggest harm we cause of the commercial.
Right, so, and then, so my, I would like to, was it a motion of the chairman? I can't, can I make a motion that we decide to only vote on the commercial versus residential rule today? And defer residential only talks until a subsequent meeting.
Well, let's consider residential means multifamily residential too, so.
Yeah, all residential, R one through seven. Do I have one?
Um, can I ask a question first? Because I have been involved in it so long.
Yeah.
And done so much background on it, I would request, seeing as the next meeting will be my last, that we place it on the next meeting.
And I will sit down, Marshall, we'll go through some impact on residential and get that into the next meeting package. All right, so do we have a motion to make the discussion only commercial versus residential? Second.
Yes.
You made a motion. Dan?
Dan?
And Ryan seconded.
What's the motion?
The motion is to only discuss the commercial versus residential discussion. Not discuss residential until the next meeting.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Thor?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, when he gets that down. The second motion would be. Oh, I'll say all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Terrible chair.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Yeah.
All right, the second one, if I won't make a motion that we agree that the forty percent rule does not apply to commercial. B one, B two, B three, do we have? So move, second. We're gonna make the same two guys every time, but it needs to be for you. Nothing else, nothing.
You're making the secretary work hard.
All right. We need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thor?
Yes, well, I guess.
So good. Still not sending anything to the council yet, because the councils aren't ready to even deal with it yet, but. We'll work with that. And then I agree, Doc, on here that I'll sit down, Marshall, and look at some multifamily impacts. Which we really need to do. All right, the next agenda I know is the Gateway District.
Can we discuss it? The motion to discuss it, sorry.
What's the, the building lot coverage?
Yeah.
I think we're gonna, we did just discuss.
Okay.
The residential coverage, and we'll discuss it again at the next meeting and determine.
This is intended for the next meeting, the, the two motions.
No, the, the two, well, we did a real one motion that the planning commission does not want the forty percent rule to apply to commercial. The first motion was to defer discussion of residential until the next meeting.
Okay.
I just wanted to get that on the record as a vote.
You said there was a third motion?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Two motions. One was to defer residential to the next meeting, the second motion was to confirm that it does not apply to commercial. Gateway District. I did a little bit of cutting and pasting of our code. And it starts on page seven of your agenda packet.
I don't have that.
You don't have the whole agenda?
I couldn't get anything to print that out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sharing there, that's true. Look at real cozy.
What, what I'd like to do in this meeting is get confirmation of what we say the extent of the gateway corridor. So in the packet, you can read the description. And I think we've talked about it so much, we're both familiar with it. Basically, Point Ground Avenue, from the gate to here, basically to the Methodist Church, which is currently B one. Ocean Shore Boulevard, from the intersection with Point Ground, down around the corner and to the Polynesian and across the street, which is the proposed act of the new construction. And then Chance Delamar, basically from the circle to Ocean Shore Boulevard and calling all of that the Gateway District. Did I miss anything in what we all?
I think the map shows that Ocean Shore Boulevard District going further south, not.
No, it's got B one, the. No, and actually, it's one of the few that the land use. Actually agrees with the zoning map, so we're good. So basically, from the Polynesian. All the way up, on the gateway, and both sides of the street on both of those. Go ahead. Are we excluding, uh, Menard Seahorse? That, all those, just the, yeah, so, okay, the gateway corridor is a loop. Got it, with two arms coming this way. Got it. Everybody clear what we're talking about for the gateway corridor extent?
What's the brown resort tourist?
Looking at zoning?
Yeah, now looking at gateway, it's just the gateway, is it this?
You look at the land use, yeah, look at the zoning map.
Yeah, I know, I know, zoning may go down, but, yeah, the land use goes further south, I was curious about that.
Um.
Is the gateway, the land use not?
Not, not lined all the time. Well, actually, the gateway shows that it kind of gets short of where the zoning does. Okay. So. What I'd like to do is that we can get this moving with actual motions is, do we have a motion to agree with the extent of the gateway part?
Elmo.
Elmo moved. Sorry, what was the motion again? To agree with the extent. Yes, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so all we voted on here was the extent of it. And that's the only vote we'll be doing on the gateway corridor today. So you're, you're almost done, Thor.
Who is it, who made the vote, Elder?
Elder did, Brian seconded, and it was unanimous on the extent. The second thing that has come up, and this is something I'm not familiar with. Um, is should we consider, because we know what we're talking about in the gateway district. I think we've talked a lot about what you've been doing, don't like in there. Should we consider it a new zone or a special district within the B one zone? Could you talk a little bit then about what you see the advantages of calling it a district?
Well, as, as Marshall pointed out. I think the last meeting. If, if we separated out, we could be causing ourselves some issues. And, and I was doing some thinking over the last month, I guess, and told them that, you know, it's nothing different than like Seattle has, Queen Anne Hill and Ballard. So I, why don't we just call it a district? And that way, all the, the rules for B one, B two, B three, it doesn't matter where they're at. It's just a, it's just kind of, it's an idea of where you're at. You go to Queen Anne Hill, you know, and Queen Anne Hill, they've got all the same codes that Ballard has.
But what I don't know is can you enforce. Um, the things we're looking to do, just sort of clean it up and make it.
Well, I thought it was just a district. I thought we were gonna align. B one, B two, and B three, and, and put what we think should go into this.
Right, but there are things in. As we went through, and this, that's sort of, we can, we can go through and stop at a minute, there are things that are currently put in, admitted in B one. As we went through, and this that's sort of, we can, we can go through and stop at it in a minute. There are things that are currently put admitted in B one. That the group in discussions felt are not appropriate for the gateway.
Kind of the appropriate for other B one area.
Yes. Most importantly, residential. The against to the anchor Menard. Multi-family residential that's inside the circle of the gateway district. So we got into issue. By saying we'd like the gateway district to only have residential on the mixed-use one in second story. That's where we sort of got into some issues.
And would there be a problem with calling it uh? B two, uh, so you can have separate rules?
Well.
So it indicates it's still under the the business rules, but there may be some extra?
Or it could be, you could either call it B one A if you want.
Alright.
Further restrictions within the B one. Because we ran into a lot of issues and and it's really, because I went down. And if you wanna go to paragraph four on that page. Page seven. I went down all the current permitted uses. And the ones that are bold are the ones that we as a group. Were thinking about saying don't belong in the gateway district. So. What doesn't belong, we said, was one family, two family, multi-family dwellings, light equipment rental, and all the uses of a similar nature. And onsite hazards, we even disturb facilities.
So I think if we connected to B, but indicate that they.
Oh, it's definitely still a B. Because all of the rest of these ones are currently in B one. Grocery and drugstores, hardware stores, hotel motel. Restaurants, cafes, taverns, cocktail lounge, bag. Special offices, general office, special shop, jewelry shop, counter. So all we're basically saying is there are currently. Three permitted uses would be one. That we're saying we would like to consider recommending to not be permitted in the gateway.
Just restrictions in that particular area.
Yeah, but to not allow these three.
Yeah.
But but I I think that our attempt was, what we did in conflict, to eliminate it out of all B one. Was it just the gateway quarter? Was it limited out of all?
That's true.
It was, but then the impact. Of that. Well, and well, maybe not, because you basically were defining the gateway corridor. In this direction, which is very similar to ours, then left out the Menard. Anchor core. And you left that as. Commercial residential. Which doesn't exist. So. Went back to the twenty nineteen land use map. Not being insane, if we didn't include, and maybe that's an error, maybe we should have included Chance Delamar up to. The church, whatever that is. The right side, basically the bank. And all that sort of stuff in their gateway car.
Hmm, I don't know that. Wouldn't that then restrict that huge piece of land and?
No, that's kind of tone. Whatever that is. Like a little general commercial. Which is, and that doesn't show up anywhere. General commercial doesn't show up in. You call plan. It doesn't show up in the zoning. This is something on the twenty nineteen land use map.
So that was part of the issue, the land use map.
Doesn't match anything.
Doesn't match anything.
Right.
So question is, we need to do it the right way and then modify the land.
Right, yeah, and we'll go back. Land land use map needs to get fixed. And we still need to define that little piece of Chance Delamar. That includes. Delamar.
It's bad French either way.
I don't, I can't do French.
It's not French.
Well, just call it chance.
It was French, you better be people who didn't know French.
Okay, so before we go to get to your issue, there are impacts. Um. In non-accessory structure and believe it or not, conditional uses. So if you go to page eight of the handout. Accessory structures. In the gateway, I thought we'd wanna get rid of residential garages, carports, private workshops, private pre-nouths, and other uses. That sort of being incompatible with our view of the gateway.
Yes.
Now, conditional uses get to be. Very interesting. So that's. Paragraph eight, and the ones again in bold. I'm thinking we would not want in the gateway district based on how I've discussed resource extraction, obviously not. Airports and heliports. Which is strange, that's all I would be one, but it is. Rowhouse is another common wall. And uses that have an outdoor characteristics, maybe permitted if it's shown it in an outdoor activity. Examples are automobile service stations, public buildings, the facilities, nurseries, lumberyards, and up. So those are con- conditional uses we would not wanna see. In the gateway district within the B one zone. Is that going? That's that's correct. Alright.
This is nobody does service stations anymore.
What?
It's nobody real service stations anymore. They're called mini marches, I think.
Yeah. It probably wouldn't. I think it would probably get our, get approved as a permitted use as a commercial.
Conditional?
No, it is a permitted use as a.
It is now.
As a grocery and hardware store. Grocery and drugstore under that probably.
Which has gas pumps or what?
Then we we don't, certainly ban gas. What specifically is an allowable conditional use right now are automobile service station. Particularly the one next to the. Next to the porthole. That's the eyesore that is uh is probably a current conditional use, always there before this zone. Predates that.
Repair facility, service station, but.
Yeah.
I think the term service station is a lot.
Yeah, I I don't think that's Australia in the code. I didn't do all of that. So. What I did then on page nine is basically what would be left. Alright. And we're not gonna vote on this today. This is just sort of for discussion. With consideration. And I wanted to show what's currently permitted in a B one, which we as a group are moving towards saying we don't want in the gateway. We recommend we don't want in gateway.
Right.
So the other reason I don't wanna vote is. I need, we need to have a discussion with Marshall on the opinion of, is this a rezone? Back to your discussion.
Yeah, Marshall's key of this.
So we make it. Where he he can't force it. Right, so.
Wanna go back and revisit it even.
Right, so basically, if it's a rezone, we go through the whole. Public hearing and all that sort of thing, which is fine. We just need to know that going in and make sure we get wherever they are. The last thing I'm gonna ask for help with on the next meeting is at the bottom of. Page ten. I put in some. Restricted use language. And I know we have a nuisance code, but we don't have a nuisance code for the commercial. So I basically, I would ask everybody to sort of look at these and bring other things. And this gets to some of our current problems. Inoperable vehicles parked overnight. I'm looking at two right now. Storage containers are left on an active construction site. I can almost see one if I look around the corner. But.
Um, well, I just. Just calling out current uses of storage containers. Bennett's had one.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, that's a plenty to his business, he knew that day.
Right, and. That's the real issue.
There's probably a couple other ones that I'm missing. Uh, uh, actually, there's one, one out, uh, probably one out behind the. Uh, Sunny Beach Cafe, but they're trying to sell that.
Motion for, I think, that's one next to his. This was something the mayor particularly brought up that thought was not appropriate for a gateway district. But I'm not sure. Uh, this one, I think we're gonna have to discuss.
Yeah, and the thing is, is I see the third container being used all over the country. In just the way that we're using it here. I don't think it's out of the ordinary.
But I also see one right around the corner that isn't acceptable. So how do we regulate it?
Sure.
No, I I. So basically, people are using them in their gateway car to store construction materials for construction on all the sites. Okay, that's what's going on.
That's what you're trying to regulate.
That's what we're trying to regulate.
What's the difference between a storage container and a shed somebody builds for storage of things?
Um, one needs a permit.
No, it's less than two hundred square feet.
Yeah, but still. Look, you're not gonna get much in a two hundred square. What storage container?
So storage container, eight eight by twenty is the sort.
Eight eight by four and fifty, eight by four or eight by twenty two and five, is that one sixty feet?
Yeah.
So I think the goal was, if you need that storage. Get a permit and build it properly. But I'm not sure we're gonna go all that way at the planning commission. But there are instances where they're being used. There's one there and the one across from the tap runs gone. Where people are basically using. Lots of buildings in the gateway district as construction, storage, and layout yards. And that's one thing we're trying to figure out how to regulate. Just, and we don't have to do this today.
Over the course of time.
Yeah.
Many uh. Motels, older ones especially, down at the hills motels and hotels. Tend to convert to apartment buildings. Once they rent it, rather than next day to day rental. How does that? Uh, practice. Effect of these gateway uh rules?
Basically, if it's. And I'd have to really look at the definition of the residency would be no.
And what do you, when you tell those people who are having, are caught between having to. Well, they can't rent them out by the month. How do you, how do you deal with that? Especially considering that um the the next, the next step to that evolution is avoid, avoid a building. It's not being able to be rented out because we've regulated it out of, out of existence.
Yeah, I mean, that's. That's the question, and I don't have the answer. I really don't. I think it's something we're gonna talk about. There's probably a.
At least a half a dozen, kind of like that, three of them on, on the gateway corridor area.
They're all built in sixteen seventies, eighties. So. And they have to have the the. No, no, we're talking different about residential. We jumped over to residential, away from power. So I guess the definition, I don't know what the definition of residential. Multi-family residential would be. Cause that, what we use it in some cases is a long-term rental. Which is more than a month.
Right.
Um. Do we tell those places they can only do month-to-month rentals without solving the problem? And not sign leases?
I don't know. Let's. A a a month-to-month rental is a week, but it's just for short term, that's all.
Right.
Our, our community has difficulty describing. The substantive difference between nightly rentals and monthly rentals. It it seems to be that, it seems that we've implied. That nightly rentals are are more. Harmful, I guess, than monthly rentals are. Deserving a special attention for some reason, but monthly rentals are not. I don't really know what the difference is, but that's how our. Uh, how our rules have evolved.
In in this community, that's not changing in the next year.
Well. Uh, what's, what's it does in this proposal, at least. What motels like the Westbury or the Ocean Court or whatever. Have to comply with motel rules and stay a hotel, they'll probably just become a blank like Brian says. Because we have more of a shortage of month-to-month rentals than we do of motel rooms right now. It probably will be for some time, because this is not the best motel environment that you could find. Forty percent occupancy is not, is not as successful hotel may. But hundred, hundred percent occupancy in month-to-month rentals is probably more successful, those other people.
I would think that that would be more desirable for the community. Um, is to have. More rentals available. And and have those units make money so they can keep them up and.
What we say here that we shouldn't be doing. Month-to-month rentals on the, on the corridor.
Yeah, and that's, that's something I've always had a problem with in this particular discussion is, is regulating out um. Any type of residence. To the point that it, it creates um. It creates an issue for the owner of that property to, to, you know, make a use of. It is just gonna leave us with a bigger problem. Then we have, we're, we're creating problems rather than solving.
Could we um? In some ways. Say any of these buildings have currently motels or nightly rentals. Are somehow exempt. Or give them a conditional use?
I suppose you could, I. And these, these kinds of conversions tend to be more organic than anything people look at specifically to do. You can't rent it down at the airport hotel out by the night because it's not popular. So what do you do? You go to the city for a permit to do it by the month, which seems to be kind of perverse because of present rules say. But nightly rentals need a permit, but monthly rentals don't, so I.
But, but. Everybody that's operating. A. Formal hotel or current hotel is doing long-term rentals. Is having to meet the hotel motel code.
Or it's more strict, yes.
Yes, which is. Actually a good thing. Because in theory, if you're meeting the hotel motel requirements versus multi-family residential. It's. Should be a better, more appropriate. The fact that it's a hotel motel. Doing monthly rentals. Is different from a purpose. Six-unit. Apartment. In my mind.
Might be, I don't know.
In my mind, it is. One, it typically has. On-site staff. Rental desk. That sort of attention typically has some sort of more intensive. Landscaping, groundkeeping. Janitorial, and it's, in my opinion, typically even the sands is still managed to some extent. The Waverly is still managed. To some extent, they're on site, they live there.
The Western, you mean?
Yeah, the rest, well, yeah. I think they live there now.
Uh, yeah, I think Gene has passed away, but.
Yeah.
But still, there's something else to be done.
But in general, my feeling, and Brian, as you guys can correct me, is that because it has to meet the hotel motel requirements. Is a little. More hands-on managed.
Well, the only substantive requirement that I can find is it requires sprinklers. And an extra plant for fire escapes, but that's a small thing, but. Uh, uh. A long-term resident does not require sprinklers unless it be, be built now.
Right. I don't have any problems with, with them having to meet the hotel motel rules. I just have problems with. Regulating out the use that like, when it's, when it's extended its lifecycle as a hotel. Telling the owner of the place or the new prospective buyers of the place that they can't rent it out on a month-to-month basis. I can't really find a reason that that makes sense with the community.
Oh, great, exactly. That would be the one up the street here, just so.
That's exactly. Well, it, you know, the thing I think we need to look at is. We can't. Do our codes or do our everything for things that might happen.
That's true.
I mean, we, we can't do this. And because we can't come up with every instance that we're gonna need to provide for. In these codes. Or in our recommendations, so because a hotel might have to go to uh. Parks? No, I, I don't think we can decide that. And I guess, that would be up to the, to the motel, because the city would say. I need a conditional use permit or whatever they need to do. I don't think we can do that.
Right, fine.
Always, I guess.
Hotel may have to convert to.
Well, no, they're already doing it. Well, but the, the, the windjammer has already done.
Well, that's, that was solidly, that was a repurpose.
Yeah, in my opinion. But that's what Thor and I are saying is a lot of these are going to that, they have already gone to that. And I'm saying right now, there's not a problem with that. I think if we regulate it out of the code, we may be creating a problem.
The question is. I thought the question was, the windjammer was a good property when it was converted, it was well-maintained, taken care of.
Well, it's, it's still, it's still a good, it's still a good property, and it's still, and, and honestly, I think that it's, it's a, a, a blessing to the community that. We have places where people who work in Ocean Shore can live in Ocean Shore, can live close to work. I think it's all good thing. I'm concerned with creating a problem where there wasn't.
Again, I think this is when we have a full of commission, more of a discussion, Richard, than again, when we have uh. I mean, the only solution to. The issue we're hearing of, this, this side and that side, or this side of the road would be single-family residential. Now, I would, anybody would reject to say. Single-family residential is probably not appropriate in the gateway.
I completely agree with that.
One on the corner of Ocean Shore Boulevard, where it turns east.
Tucked up a great building and.
What is that?
That's uh, used to be a, oh, winery.
That's the old winery. Is that a single-family residence now?
There's one there, there's a couple of the uh. Down the street, Ocean Boulevard, there's one across the street from there. There's one there, and there's a couple of, down the street, Ocean Boulevard, there's one across the street from there, uh, they're probably four or five.
Single families?
Yeah, nothing built since the eighties maybe.
I can't believe.
Well, that, that one, um, in the Ocean, yeah, on Ocean Shore Boulevard, um, kind of across the street from the senior center, that's a beautiful lot.
Why? Beautiful place. I didn't know the single-family residence.
There was one east of the days, east of the days.
That's not a single family.
I think that might be the one I'm thinking of.
A single family, is it?
Yeah. There's, uh, uh, I learned a couple of oceanfront house rentals.
Yeah, okay, I know what you're talking about. Those are the night rentals.
But I can totally agree that we don't wanna permit that going forward. I just wanna, I wanna make sure that if we're gonna make some changes to the codes, that we are you know, taking into account some of the, the uses and, and, and the things that are happening now and the things like these hotels that are moving to. Cause you gotta, you gotta realize all those hotels, they were all built in the eighties or earlier.
Yeah.
And they're, they're outliving their life cycle already.
And I, I understand the, the whole model of, you know, national chain, walk away, they've got, bought, become something else. It's really not.
Yeah.
Because they can't beat the national chain, the investment market.
Um, or they become drug firms.
Well, they
Like the Olympic Inn in town, like everything, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, where they don't have any viable customers for nightly rentals, but they have viable customers for something like that.
So, so I guess really is, this is something that I, and I understand this whole discussion of what we're doing is something I probably need to do a temperature check with the mayor and where he wants to go with the council on this, you know, and clearly, when the council approved the comprehensive plan, they didn't know, they basically said there's a chance they could have made those go, go on into this issue because comprehensive plan said exactly what we just said. No residential except on the second story of a multi-use building.
I can't imagine anybody's ever read the comprehensive plan.
Oh, they have. They, they went to the section myself.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, maybe by each section.
Maybe it is. More of a dream sheet, I thought they were listening to that.
But I, but I, but now that we're asked to and want to clean up the Gateway District, it's become a real issue. Oh, sure, yeah. What we wanna do. I mean, we started with car washes and automobile repair and, you know, illegal storage of construction vehicles and overnight storage of all that sort of stuff.
And, and most of that, I think, is, is a great idea that everybody agrees on. And I think there's just a few sticking points that I just wanna bring up and make sure that, that everybody knows that if we go down this road, we might be creating more problems than we're solving.
Alright, that's fine. And I think, um, again, the only thing I wanted to get confirmation on today is longer was the extent, which we did by vote. I wanted to bring this up and I thought the highlighting what would no longer be ends by Richard's attempt, essentially, and every other way, was the best way of the current zone permitted uses. But more importantly, the conditional uses, if I went through the code line by line, that we probably don't wanna see in the Gateway District. And it's really, our big sticking point is residential.
And again, I just wanna reiterate, the reason that that's a sticking point for me is throughout the country, not just Ocean Shore. Places for people to live or understand are at an all-time low. And we're gonna talk about removing some from, you know, a good area of Ocean Shore, it just doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
Even though I would agree that I don't wanna see somebody build, you know, a huge single-family home on Point Brown, it's probably not gonna happen anyway, but
I've seen you crazy, but I see two lots over here that where it could happen.
Yeah.
And I see a single-family over here home that needs to either be torn down, fixed, or something happened to it. So, I guess one dollar there.
Yeah, I think that's a great law.
No, but there are, there are almost great laws. It's just one that used to be a nursery.
Oh, that one. Yeah, that's just a nice one. Well, I think they all need to be turned down. They need to be, you know, a commercial
water for the use kind of thing. So any more discussion on Gateway District?
We, did we add a motion on that?
No, the only motion we had was the extent, and you already reported that.
I don't think I did.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah. That was to agree on it on the extent. That's all we wanted.
The limits, okay.
Okay. And so the last thing I threw in here was the current code on lock clearing. The only reason I put it in here is mayor had to include me on correspondence, the answer right to city council to tell the city council to stay out of locker. Basically, why? Because of the citizen complaints, uh, that are going directly to city council and going to the mayor on the degree of vegetated removal during lock clearing. In the mayor's letter, he was extremely supportive of Marshall, in what Marshall's been doing. And you're not gonna find anybody more diligent in the lock clearing permit world. Can I see Marshall out there all the time?
What's he doing? What, what's he doing?
Complying with the code.
I don't even know what that is.
But that's in here, and you'll see. Alright, and the big discussion is free removal. And the big discussion on tree removal at the end of your agenda packet is, uh, you gotta remain ten percent of significant trees, which are eight inches in diameter, uh, just by.
And that's been the rule.
But for the whole one hour.
I think what we have is a few bad actors that have gone through and just removed everything that's given, given a bad
And you, and you actually can do that if it's in the way of the house or the construction. What we have to do is replace them three to one in the current code.
I think when we address this, number one, I don't think it does a whole lot of good to, to stick a fine on the homeowner who's building a house. I think if you find the people that are clear in the locks, they're not gonna go in there and take it down to the sand, wall to wall.
And we've had Marshall said in his own zero wall-to-wall lock clearing or weather permitting clear. Cause there was, there was no way to get the house by the time you do setbacks and all that sort of stuff. All the significant trees had to go. What may not be happening is the follow-up for the three-to-one replacement. Don't know. But I, I only put this in here because it's become a citizen issue. And I'm asking you guys to read this. And if you have any ideas on how to make it better, just send them to me via email.
Well, I think that, you know, when, when I was counseling, the mayor did talk about, he talked to Marshall and Scott Anderson about this. And as I read this, that's pretty, that's quite good.
I just, it was All, all that wanted you to, got to read it one more time. If you have any recommendations, let me know.
I think I might have just too small to, to be aspirational about it, honestly.
So it may end up, what I wanna do then is at the next meeting, if nobody had the recommendation of change, I'm gonna let's tell the mayor that the planning commission reviewed the current code and agrees with it as written. That's my intent of putting it in there.
Yeah, I, I'd like to hear Marshall's.
Marshall's take. That's the other thing. But, uh, basically to strengthen the position that where the planning commission has relooked at this again and has not come up with anything better. Go ahead, Eleanor.
One of the problems I have is I understand taking down trees, which we have to do where the house is going to sit. But that doesn't mean you should strip every piece of vegetation everywhere up.
And that's, we can talk to Marshall about a way if it's in language to change that a little bit. The flip side of it, so if it's done, they're leaving trees that are just public. You know, the twin homes on Marine View with the little islands sticking up in front are just
Well, we were able to put, uh, almost nineteen hundred square foot house and overside two power out and a shed and still maintain a huge amount of vegetation, right? So it can be done. You just have to make it a requirement to do.
But there's also the part where it's up to that landowner. Like you have to, like, Marshall has to be very careful because that's their property. If they want to strip it and fill it with three-to-one different vegetation, because that makes more sense to them, or they like that aesthetically, they can do that. So when people drive by and see something completely stripped, they don't, they don't go and do a public record request to find out why, or if there's already been a plan and a landscape and all this stuff that Marshall checks off. They go to their nearest Facebook group and complain about it.
And I think a huge part of the complaint comes from a homeowner that is used to having an empty lot next to them, and then all of a sudden a vegetated lot next to them, and then all of a sudden it's stripped bare and they're ticked off, but they're not seeing what the finished product is gonna be. They're seeing an empty lot where they used to just eat trees.
That's why I'm growing my power again.
To get to your point, to get to the other point is you don't have to have highly vegetated locks to make, in some views, people view, was a well landscaped lot.
Mm-hmm.
Look at mine. I've got Africa mulch gravel because I didn't wanna do grass. And it's considered one of the nicer landscape lot in Ocean Shore and tamed a tree on it. It wasn't what I bought it either, couldn't have built the seventy. It had been, you know, clear cut all the way back from seventy. It was a sand dune.
Yeah, but I, I think a lot of
So, and the point is sometimes it's more of a taste.
Yeah. I think the biggest issue is that people's, for me anyways, like across the lake for me. I mean, there was this huge tree. It had come out there.
Exactly.
So they spricked the whole off. They put up the, uh, uh, walls so the guy next to him would slide in. And they put back zero vegetation, except the grass that naturally grew. That's their home, and that's the issue I see.
That's what I, and, and we can look at that, and if nobody finds language at you know, uh, you know, as a result after construction landscaping.
That's a good tea.
And that part of the
I don't know, we gotta, we just gotta read a little bit of it.
At the end of the day, we need to, what I'm trying to do is come up with a way to support Marshall and the mayor in what they have, clearing issues based on what's going on.
Exactly.
That's what I'm trying to do. So if we change nothing, we change nothing, the planning commission can come up with language to increase the teeth of the, uh, re-landscaping after construction. We can do that, whatever we want, because something to stop the, like you said, most of the people see the lock cleared there and they freak out not knowing that there is a landscape plan that was approved as part of the lock clearing. Where Marshall went out there and measured the trees and found, you know, you have to keep one, cause there was ten percent. That means you're gonna have ten significant trees. There's a lot of lots that don't have that. So it was zero significant trees. They freak out because this lot was zero significant trees, was completely clear, but he still required the landscaping plan with vegetation or something else.
And they also say that he run into where they claim it's a dangerous tree. Well, who's gonna say it's not? Is the city gonna hire somebody and, you know, test drill a tree to see if it's actually
I actually trust most of the arbers. D and W is doing a good job, Dean's doing a good job.
But the city liability is not going to say that's not a dangerous tree, and then within a year it falls on that person's house and we're on the copper for their home.
Yep.
Because we said, no, sorry, you can't remove it. It's dangerous.
I understand. I work with Dean and T W all the time, and that's the big issue. I had to have a danger tree removed on one of my renovation properties. I had to go because it was, when the house was built, it was twelve feet tall. Now it's thirty-eight feet tall and right next to the home. The lot held most of the trees were planted in sixty, they're not, they're not in vision as, they're not supposed to be there. And they grow too fast, they're too big, overgrown, where you still Alright, so I'm just asking to look at this, so we can do that. So I try to tell our woman I addressed residential up next week.
Alright.
On that forty percent rule, we will get to it.
Do we wanna do anything with this commercial portion of it?
Uh, we've already agreed that it doesn't find it worth. But I'm not, I'm gonna send this to the mayor in one package for a change in municipal code. When we come to a decision on residential. Alrighty. I'm gonna look up here. I keep just standing now. Brian, you're up for the next secretary. Eleanor, you're never gonna have to do it again.
Oh, I think we should move her up. Cause she would have been out there. One last time.
No. I objected to it at the first meeting I attended.
We understand. And I did ask the mayor, and he said he had no staff to be the secretary. So. Alright, so the next secretary is Bachman. The next meeting date is cause we're not meeting Thanksgiving week. The next meeting date is December thirteenth. Yep.
Alright.
And we're gonna have a special party afterwards. Lots of shit.